Talley?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes. Welcome, everyone. And a couple of days ahead of time, happy Halloween. It was a, I don't know if anyone was downtown Madison on this Saturday, but I would say it was a record crowd of people wearing funny outfits and all sorts of things. The parade was incredible as they filled up one side of Waverly Place and we had to start sending them to the other side. A lot of fun and the stores ran out of candy from Trick or Treaters, so we thanked the Chamber of Commerce for organizing that great event. Friday night, I was invited to the ribbon cutting for the Central Avenue School mural and I would encourage anyone that has a chance to go take a look at it. It's incredible, takes up multiple walls and it's the many sights of Madison. The students were asked what their favorite sights were and they did a great job of covering it, including, of course, a beautiful painting as you look down the hallway of Central Avenue School, which is our oldest elementary school. Also, what they did on Friday night was the first annual family reading night where families came down with their children, including ones that were not Central Avenue School students, encouraged to wear their pajamas and bring their stuffed, favorite stuffed animals and then sat down and were read to in four separate sessions where they got to rotate around. So I was there. Also joining us to read was Patrol Woman Lisa Esposito, Captain Ed Dunn, and Chief Lou De Rosa, all reading to the students. That was a very nice event. And I don't think Dennis Salco is not here, could not make it. He normally joins us just before November for a proclamation declaring Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month, November 2014. And just like every other form of cancer, to read these numbers are just certainly staggering and a reminder of we've come a long ways, we've got a long ways to go. Whereas in 2014, estimated 46,000 people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States and 39,000 will die from the disease. And whereas pancreatic cancer, one of the deadliest cancers, is currently the fourth leading cause of cancer death in the United States and is projected to become second by the year 2020. And whereas pancreatic cancer is the only major cancer with a five-year relative survival rate in the single digits at just 6%. And whereas when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, is generally late-stage and 73% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of the diagnosis, while 94% die within the first five years. And whereas approximately 1,200 deaths will occur in New Jersey in 2014. Whereas the Recounts and Trint Cancer Research Act was signed into law in 2013, which calls on the National Cancer Institute to develop scientific framework or strategic plans for pancreatic cancer and other deadly cancers, which will help provide a strategic direction and guidance needed to make true progress against these diseases. And whereas the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network is a national organization serving pancreatic cancer community in the borough of Madison and nationwide through a comprehensive approach that includes public policy, research funding, patient services, and public awareness and education related to developing effective treatments and a cure for pancreatic cancer. And whereas the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network and its affiliates in the borough of Madison support those patients currently battling pancreatic cancer, as well as those who have lost their lives to the disease and are committed to nothing less than a cure. And whereas the good health and well-being of the residents of the borough of Madison are enhanced as a direct result of the increased awareness about pancreatic cancer research into early detection, causes, and effect treatments. Now therefore, I have Robert H. Conley, the mayor of the borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body proclaim the month of November 2014 as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month in the borough of Madison. And I also want to share a letter that we have signed by all our council members. We are sending to the county. You've heard recently from several residents in the Central Avenue neighborhood and talking about concerns about the traffic on that road, which is a county road. We had a, which we spoke about last council meeting, a neighborhood meeting here, which was well-attended for an afternoon meeting and it included representatives of the county. And their support in that meeting and their follow-up has been incredible. So this is a, I'll read this very quickly. Dear Freeholder Director Mastriangelo, the Madison governing body would like to formally express our appreciation for the prompt and professional assistance extended to our community and residents by Ms. Dina Leary and Mr. Chris Witz regarding the above-referenced county roadway. Dina and Chris participated in a very well-attended neighborhood meeting to discuss traffic calming initiatives for Central Avenue. They developed a comprehensive strategy to be jointly implemented on an expedited basis by Morris County and the borough of Madison. They articulately explained each step to our residents, which went a long way to diffuse the situation. Both are excellent representatives of the Morris County government. And the county responded by saying they are in agreement that the speed limit could be lowered from 35 to 30. So thank you for all the council members for signing this and we will send this off to the county. Reports from committees, health, Mr. Landrigan.
All right, well, most of my time this week, I've been wearing my OEM hat and a health department hat and I've been sifting through these papers. It's all about Ugesse Ebola. I've been getting emails all day long about it and what I'd like to do is just give you some highlights of what I've received, but also let you know that earlier, early last week, I had a meeting along with the health department and we briefed all first responders in Madison, as well as our surrounding towns, about the Ebola virus and what they need to do. And what I said to them is what I'll say to the public in general. The information that we provide is not meant to tell you to not worry about it. It's not meant to tell you to worry about it. It's to present the facts and allow you to make an informed decision. The media is doing their part to get ratings with it. And I'm not gonna, you know, not gonna lie about that. But there is some good information out there and I'm gonna just touch on it here. But I'm also, I also talked to Ray Cody. A lot of this information will be put on the RoseNet website, so you can have it firsthand. I'm just gonna go through some of the highlights here. Like I said, it's not meant to make you worry more or less. It's just good, solid information that you all should know. Okay, first, what is meant by direct contact? Well, direct contact means a disease may be spread from one person to another when there is direct physical contact between an infected person and an uninfected person. This means that the infected person's blood, body fluids, or infected person's items can be passed to another if there is physical openings in the skin and mucous membranes. What that also means is, and it's said later on, there's a question somebody asks, can you get this by sitting next to a coworker? No, you know, it's not gonna happen that way. It's the way I just described. And then, you know, some people say, well, what's the difference between sneezing and, you know, the droplets? Well, sneezing, what they effectively says here is when you sneeze, it becomes like a mist and that's not what is meant by a droplet. Ebola is passed from person to person through droplets, which don't go very far and it has to get into your mucous membrane. So the odds of getting it by a sneeze from somebody, minimal at best. It's probably not gonna happen. Can someone get Ebola from a coworker? I just talked about that. If someone survives Ebola, can he spread the virus? The answer is no. People who recover from it cannot spread it. And how is it spread, I mean? You have to be symptomatic, meaning you have to be exhibiting signs that you have the virus. And that normally happens after 21 days. So somebody has to look sick, have the fever, and then you have to have to physically come in contact with the bodily fluids to get it. It's not through a sneeze, it's not through sitting next to somebody. I'm not, so like I said, I'm not trying to minimize it, I'm not trying to overstate it, but the odds of it happening are minimal at best. This will be put out on the website. Read it, it's good information and just take it for what it's worth. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works and Engineering, Mr. Cattinello.
Thank you very much, Mayor. The 2014 Road Improvement Program milling and paving work for the remaining five roads has been delayed, but it's scheduled to begin on November 3rd. Notices will be distributed this week. Please see the RoseNet municipal website or enroll in the NICSLE Alert system for quicker updates. New Jersey Department of Transportation and Adela Pelo contractors have completed the majority of milling and paving work on Main Street in Madison. The permanent striping contracts will be continued this week. Final grant payments were received from the state of New Jersey for both Rosedale Avenue, an amount of $35,000, and for Green Avenue, an amount of $57,500. Preliminary reimbursement of the Ridge Dale Avenue Phase 1, Central to Oxford, will occur once plans have been approved by the state. Regarding traffic, meetings with the Oak Court residents about parking and school bus access with Central Ave. residents regarding speeding control and traffic calming continue. I'll let others talk about that. Work on the primary electric service to the North Street Pump Station continues. Special thanks to cooperating with all departments, Electric Order DPW. Final repairs to the flow monitoring device on Brook Lake Road will be completed this week. The HVAC system sealing and lighting repairs designed by EI Associates for the library project was advertised on October 2nd, 2014. Pre-bid meeting was held on-site October 21st and is scheduled, anticipates receiving bids November 13th for the project for spring construction. Waverly Green Parking Lot is being drafted at this time, anticipating a fall bid and a late spring construction. Administration will be sending announcements to individual property owners adjoining the repaving project upon completion of the plan. Finally, there were several study committee meetings held in the month of October. I was present at the Strategic Planning Committee held on October 23rd and we have a follow-up meeting scheduled on the 6th. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Utilities, Ms. Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. I only have, I don't have a report from the electric department, but there's just a few items from the water department. A couple of weeks ago, I mentioned that there's going to be hydrant flushing. What they did is they flushed the hydrants on Main Street Park Avenue and Madison Avenue and they have to do that in the evening, of course, it makes sense because you can't, you can't hold up a lot of traffic and whatever. During that time, they also inspected the hydrants and made sure they were operational. The day hydrant flushing in all of the neighborhoods may be put off, especially now because David has started leaf pickup and we don't want to put a lot of water into, into the roads because it'll just flush all of the leaves. And so that may be put off. So that day hydrant flushing will not probably take place until the spring. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Safety, Ms. Bailey.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Fire Department, three of our volunteer firefighters completed a 20-hour firefighter safety and survival course this past weekend at the Morris County Fire Training Academy. They are now trained and certified to be part of the Rapid Intervention Crew, which is called the RIC team. Fire Department is still encouraging people to become volunteers and if anybody is interested in more information and what's required of a volunteer fireperson, please go to www.madisonfd.com. Thank you.
Finance Borough Clerk, Mr. Wolkowitz.
Thank you. I'd like to start off with a brief announcement from the clerk's office and that is, I hope this is not news, but on November 4th, we have a general election. And all Madison polling locations will be open from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Registered voters who cannot get to the polls can vote by mail up until 3:00 p.m. the day before the election. So in other words, up until 3:00 p.m. on November 3rd. If you have any questions, please call the borough clerk for additional information. Parenthetically, I'd just like to add my two cents. In Madison, your vote does count. If you look at the vote totals for council over the last several years, it's quite clear that every single vote does count, so please vote. Finance Report. I've been updating you on KRE and I would, KRE being the developers for the Green Village Road property. They were, initially, we thought they might be here this evening to talk about their concept for development of that property. In fact, they will be here at our next meeting and the reason for that is they're going before the planning board on November 4th, at their next meeting, and then they'll come here. The good news to all that is they're moving along at a brisk clip and the faster it gets done, the better it is for all involved. The Shared Services Agreement that we have with Chattenborough to provide construction code inspections has been extended for an additional year. It will now expire 12/31/2017 instead of 12/31/2016. Given that the revenue to date from this arrangement has exceeded budget, it's good news. The 2014 tax sale for properties delinquent for more than one year in tax and/or utility payments will be held on December 11th. The good news to what's an unfortunate situation is that we anticipate very few properties will be offered. And then finally, I'd like to mention that our bond council filed with the local finance board for our advanced refunding, bids are due in on November 13th and there will be a special council meeting that evening to accept the winning bids. So cross your fingers, hope the market's in our favor. Thank you.
From the Senior Center, the Healthy, Wealthy, and Wise Program on Elder Care Law presented by Thomas Murphy was very well received by 42 attendees. Many concepts were discussed and Mr. Murphy gave concise explanations of well-chosen examples. Second, the Northwest New Jersey Community Action Partnership will be sending four trained Medicare counselors to the Senior Center on November 12th to supplement our regular state health insurance assistance program appointments during the irregular open enrollment period, which will be ending this year on December 7th. Appointments can be made for individuals or couples wishing to change their overall coverage with special emphasis on Medicare Part D, which covers prescription drugs. And from the DDC, the Sidewalk Art Gallery Gala and Auction, which took place last Friday and was, one of the auctioneers was our own mayor, was a big success. The silent and live auctions raised money for the artists in the DDC and was a great way to complete another season of a very popular program. And a very early heads up for those who are looking forward to the springtime or at least the late winter. Taste of Madison 2015 is scheduled for Monday, March 30th, at the Park Avenue Club. And from the Chamber of Commerce, they want to acknowledge the Halloween Hoopla this past Saturday was, as the mayor said, a very big success. Thank you to Frank Ironone from the Madison Pharmacy for organizing the event and all the merchants that participated to help kick off this Halloween season. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Communications and petitions.
Yes, Mayor. Council received an email October 19th from resident Brian Loudermilk on Niles Avenue regarding leaf collection. Also received a letter dated today, October 27th, from Diane Mann of the Madison YMCA thanking the Madison Police Department for their efforts that led to the arrest of suspects in the locker room thefts. And a second letter also from Ms. Mann of the YMCA thanking the mayor and council for recognizing the Rosette gymnastics team at the last meeting.
Thank you. Now we're on to the first of two invitations for discussion. This one is limited to items that are on the agenda or resolutions that are listed for, on the consent agenda. Ordinances will have hearings and so you comment during those hearings or other things you may comment on the second invitation. Police special duty ordinance, canceling balances of $10 or less, utility balances, release of funds from the Affordable Housing Trust, mid-block crosswalk on Madison Avenue, amending Chapter 185-32 Borough Code for time limit restrictions on parking on Keep Street, purchase of a police traffic vehicle, and amending ordinance 17-2014 to increase the appropriation for purchase of new generator at Well E. So if you want to comment on any of those agenda items or any of the resolutions, please step up to lectern, state your name, your address, write the same on the clipboard and then state the agenda topic or resolution you're commenting on and then keep your comments to three minutes or less. Anyone wishing to comment? Seeing none, I close this part of the agenda and we move on to agenda discussions. Police special duty ordinance.
The chief is here, but basically, this is a request from the police department. Right now, we have an ordinance in effect that doesn't provide for cancellation charge to the party requesting special off-duty police coverage for their construction site or event. This provides a cancellation notice to the applicant that if they don't give 24-hour notice to the police and the officers have responded and taken their day off to be there, that there's a penalty charge of two hours for nonprofit groups and four hours for a commercial vendor. And that's the only change to the ordinance.
Right, and this ordinance is listed for introduction. Any questions or comments on this? Okay, we'll move forward with the introduction. Canceling utility balances of $10 or less.
Question from the tax collector. At the reorganization meeting, the council passed a resolution for property tax receivables under $10 or refunds of $10 or less. This is a way that she can clean up old balances that have been on the books for years for unpaid sewer or water or electric bills that are $10 or less and it's a way that our auditor is recommended to deal with prior uncollectible small amounts. And we recommend it for your approval.
Any questions? Resolution 298. Release of funds from the Affordable Housing Trust.
The governing body discussed this in executive sessions. Request for a release of $150,000 to repair the main elevator at Rexford Tucker Senior Citizen Apartments, which are owned by the Madison Housing Authority. There was a general consensus that unanimous that obviously the governing body wants to support that work. We requested the executive director to prepare the specifications for that work and to come back at the November 10th meeting with a plan to present, to see if there was an alternative, one of which was that HUD has, they have adequate reserves, but they need permission from HUD. And the request was to pursue HUD and if the funds can be released in a timely way, to use that as the funding source. If not, the governing body would step up and make sure this critical work is done on an expedited basis to make sure we have a main elevator repaired and operational at the Rexford Tucker Apartments.
And the consensus was if it does come back here for funding source, it'll be structured as a loan?
That was the, yes.
Any other comments or? Mid-block crosswalk, Madison Avenue?
Chief is here, but he's tired tonight, so I'm gonna take that.
He brought the cheap seats in the back.
State Department of Transportation looked at the traffic on Highway 124 and they were concerned that pedestrian traffic in the vicinity of FDU, students in particular, and at Drew University needed this type of intersection, mid-block crosswalk to be striped on the state highway. The police department supports that. The Traffic Safety Officer recommends it. We need to approve it by resolution to authorize mid-block crosswalks at those two locations. It's a good safety thing.
And the striping would happen along with the?
Putting back the bike lanes, we hope.
So there's just gonna be a crosswalk, there's not gonna be any signalization for this? There'll be signage that tells people that people in the crosswalk are, have the right of way?
I don't, the letter does not mention signage. We probably could put our own signage up. I'm sorry, chief.
Okay, and then the one at Drew, I guess, would be in front of their main entrance? Is that about where it is? I wasn't quite sure about the one for FDU. I'm assuming that's in front of their main entrance, but it seemed like an odd place for a crosswalk only because I didn't think a lot of kids came out of Drew, I'm sorry, out of FDU that way or where they were going.
It's primarily a commuter school. Yeah, no, the state, it wasn't our municipal-generated request.
Okay, thank you.
And before we go to Austria, just since the microphone would not have picked up the chief's comments, the question was, would there be signage? And the chief's recommendation is, yes, there should be signage in advance of the crosswalks.
Well, this is a terrific traffic calming method for that street. And what I'd like to see, and perhaps Complete Streets can take this up, is on the eastern end of Main Street, I was watching people trying to cross with groceries and I'm thinking, we need something there to protect people. So maybe Complete Streets can start initiating that with Department of Transportation.
Yeah, certainly shows that the state is more open to crosswalks and, yeah, the eastern end, we've been.
Poor lady ran across the street with groceries in her arms and I was going, oh my gosh. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this? This is Resolution 294 again. This next one, parking on Keep Street, which includes along the YMCA property, so I'm gonna recuse myself. Bob Landrigan will take over the meeting and including the introduction of the ordinance. And also, Austria Bailey is a board member.
Okay, the next item is to amend Chapter 185-32 of the Borough Code to include time limit restrictions for parking on Keep Street.
I can respond to that. We've been receiving through the police desk a number of complaints from the residents in Keep Street that commuters who choose or are unable to purchase a permit and non-residents are parking their cars all day, every day on Keep Street and taking away the spaces in front of the residents' homes. So what's proposed, which is different than what's in your package, is a request from the police department that on the north side only of Keep Street, that would be four-hour parking, which would allow our enforcement officer to mark the tires in the morning and if they're still there at lunchtime, to start to give tickets to send a signal, you can't park there. And we hope that that improves and it's a recommendation from the Traffic Safety Officer and the chief to change the parking. And this would, the way to do it is we have to amend the ordinance.
Can I ask? Yeah. Yeah. I think my question is that there's a reason that all this parking is going on on Keep Street. Is there not enough room in the lots at this point?
We have, we have totally sold out all our permits again this year. And we have 66 Madison residents on the waiting list. Some residents, non-residents in particular, Harding and Farm, have called us on a regular basis for access. So they tend to park on Maple when they're trying to avoid, and that's a four-hour, or they park on Keep Street, or they park in the Stop &amp; Shop parking lot and they haven't chosen to enforce through towing, so a lot of people park over there. But we're trying to preserve the residential nature of the streets.
But it's still mostly all Madison residents, right?
It's hard to determine. Well, we'll find out once we get the calls when they get tickets. We'll find out where they're from.
No, I'm not talking about Keep Street, in the lots.
The permits are, other than the daily, the $5 a day spots are first come, first served. The commuter permits are exclusively for Madison residents and we have a 66-person waiting list. So all the permits go to Madison residents first and we have more demand than supply. But the $5 a day is first come, first served to anybody.
Rob?
Thank you. Why only the north side?
Currently, the south side, there is no, there's no parking currently on the south side, which is, which is the way the residents prefer. So this would just regulate, they didn't want to change. We kind of talked to the neighbors.
That's fine, I understand, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Okay, Liz, now the mayor asked that we move, introduce that ordinance. So do you want to read that part of it? That'll be ordinance 55-2014.
Orderance 55-2014, an ordinance of the borough of Madison amending Chapter 185-32 of the Borough Code entitled Vehicles and Traffic to include time limit restrictions for parking on Keep Street.
Bill moved. I move ordinance 55-2014. Any discussion? Okay, roll call.
Mr. Cattinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Okay, I guess you can bring him back in.
It'll be on for, when is it gonna?
November the 10th.
Thank you. Purchase of police traffic vehicle.
Chief is here, he's still not, still not rising, so. This year, the governing body authorized the purchase of three vehicles for the police department, three patrol vehicles. One through the police operating budget, which has been acquired. One through the capital budget of the borough, which has been acquired. The third, you challenge to the police department and say, we'd like you to self-generate through your special duty fees, the hourly fees. We added a $20 per hour, per hour work by the officer on private special duty pay to go into a fund. They've now generated in excess of $35,000 that, to, in effect, self-pay for the third vehicle. So we just wanted to recognize their efforts and the efforts of the entire department. And this, we think, will be our traditional funding source moving forward and hopefully to even generate them as a funding source for two vehicles because this is only part of the year the fee was increased for 2014. So it's a good trend.
Questions or?
Bob? Just a quick question. Where will the older police vehicles be going? Will they be recycled within the borough?
The Board of Health has been blessed with the older vehicles. The ones that are safe and can be fixed economically are refurbished and shared with the Board of Health. But I think, I do anticipate the Board of Health will make a request in the capital budget for a car.
That's fine, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? That's Resolution 299. And amend ordinance 17-2014, increase the appropriation for the purchase of a new generator at Well E.
Our DPW superintendent's here.
Yep, David's here, come on.
He's rising.
Got more energy than.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. On this appropriation here, we did a capital improvement fund for the water department beginning of the year for 80 beginning of the year for $80,000. We're putting in a new generator down at well E. At the time, I didn't have that generator sized. I did leave, put in your package, the cost of the diesel generator in that, in there, is, just for the generator alone, is $80,000. That is not counting the day tank, not counting the transfer switch, it's not counting installation. So that's why I had to increase it by, go from 180 to 140,000 dollars.
And certainly, the importance of this is, on this anniversary of Sandy is running our...
This is for the water, for the, one well behind the plaza, well E. That's the one back there.
Okay, any questions or comments? Rob, and then Bob.
Why did we choose diesels opposed to gas, natural gas?
Natural gas generator, I had a size, we're going to 300 KW, is $134,000 if we want to do that, and that's when we have to run the gas line ourselves. So with a diesel generator, it's a savings there alone, and with that, with there, I can, and that's not with installation, $130,000, $134,000, that's just a generator, and that's not with the transfer switch or anything, that's why I'm going with diesel.
What's the capacity of the tank and running time on a...
Capacity of the tank is a 500-gallon tank, so it's probably, we can run, if we have to run full bore, it's gonna be like for four days solid, but this is not gonna run full bore. It only goes on and off when it's as needed for pumping.
Okay, all right, good to know. Uh, Bob?
David, is this one of the wells that you had to tow a generator around to, or we were concerned during Sandy?
Uh, yes, that one there, yes. That's one of the toll roads that the Water Department had to bring around to keep that well going during Sandy.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Carmella?
David, is this the last generator that you need on the wells? Have all the wells been, done that?
As of right now, yes, that'd be the, should be the last generator for the wells there, because we have done, they did a lot of, Bob did upgrades at well, well D, well A, they got big generators already there, so they're still in good shape there, and the other ones, we haven't maintained, and all the other wells, to C and B, so that's why.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you, David, and this is Ordinance 56, which is listed for introduction. Now we move on to ordinances for hearings.
Okay, the ordinance is scheduled for hearing, were introduced by title and passed on first reading at a regular meeting of the council held on October 15th, 2014. It was, they were posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public requesting seen.
I call up ordinances for second reading, ask the clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance 50-2014, an ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Chapter 94 of the Borough Code entitled Electric Utility Appendix B to Increase the Reconnection Fee.
I open the hearing, anyone wishing to comment on Ordinance 50-2014, please, step lectern, state your name and your address, and write the same. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 50-2014.
Mr. Mayor, second that motion. Any council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I declare Ordinance 50-2014 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in a newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance 51-2014, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $45,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for Accessible Ramp Improvements at the Hartley-Dodge Memorial.
I open the hearing for Ordinance 51-2014, anyone wishing to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 51-2014.
I'll second.
Council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I declare Ordinance 51-2014 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in a newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance 52-2014, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $200,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the Waverly Green Parking Lot Improvements Project.
I open the hearing on Ordinance 52-2014, anyone wishing to comment on this ordinance, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 52-2014.
I'll second.
Council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I declare Ordinance 52-2014 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in a newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. And Ordinance 53-2014 has a hearing date set for November 24th, 2014. And now we're on to the second invitation for discussion, where people in the audience may comment on anything pertinent to the business of the borough, so please step forward, state your name, your address, and write the same on the clipboard. Anyone wishing to comment? Yes, welcome, John.
Thank you, John Hoover, Overhill Drive. Several meetings ago, there was an item on the agenda called Code of Conduct, and I have not seen it brought up again, I haven't seen it on the agenda, and I was just curious about when it was going to be introduced formally and approved, because I think every organization should have a code of conduct. If there doesn't, if one does not exist, I think it should, if it just needs to be amended, I think it should, so I'm curious about when that's gonna happen, and I'd like to get it on expeditiously if we could.
Thank you. The code of conduct, planned to have that on the agenda for our next meeting, there was one that was drafted a while back, our attorney, Matthew Giacobi, reviewed it to the state laws, and has come up with another version, we'll be, I'm gonna be sitting down with him to review that.
A much better version.
A much better version, yes.
It also tracks a lot of the state ethics laws that are mandated by governing body members, elected officials, et cetera, to comply with, as well as appointed officials, so we wanted to track that, so the people, I, I'm with the belief that the more times you tell people, the better off you are, and so if it's in a code of conduct and people understand what the rules and engagement are, it's helpful. So it is drafted, and we're gonna be doing it on the...
The 10th. Correct. Discussion. Anyone else wishing to comment?
My name is Dr. Krista McKenna, I'm a homeowner at Three Station Road in Madison, where I live with my husband and two young daughters, he's actually watching the girls while I'm here. The zoning officer suggested that we come this evening to tell you, we are getting ready to submit an application to the zoning board of adjustment for certain improvements on our lot. We understand there have been concerns raised by an adjacent neighbor. This is my first town council meeting, it's very exciting, and I just wanted to take the opportunity to tell you guys, I love living in Madison. My husband and I grew up both elsewhere, we chose Madison after looking around at a lot of very nice towns, and it is really amazing at many levels. The school system is wonderful, the library, and I'm a huge lover of books, the library resources and the staff are phenomenal, the kids' programs and the adult programs. On every level that I've interacted with anyone in the town, they've been very professional, very courteous, very helpful, you know, not just answering a question in a basic way, but really being helpful. The police are, you know, always courteous, and the education they provide to the kids at the school, as does the fire department, I think, makes the kids realize that officials can be approachable, can be helpful. The events, we were at the Halloween Hoopla, it was wonderful, we're looking forward to the Santa Parade, events like Touch a Truck, at which there's a lot of official representation, and also the kids get to sit in a police car, that's very exciting. But it's very clear to me, as someone who grew up elsewhere and lived in a lot of places, this doesn't happen by chance. Having a town as lovely as Madison that works in so many levels takes a lot of planning, it takes planning that goes over many years, such as some of the plans that have been put in place for ball fields and playgrounds, and, and a lot of that leadership, dedication really starts here, so I wanted to thank you guys for your efforts. You probably may have heard a lot of complaints during Sandy and the blizzards, but I can tell you that compared to friends and colleagues, the response was amazing. I had, you know, friends in the same profession as me that had to get to work, they had to go take care of sick people, they couldn't get out of their driveways. We all could get to work, it was, the plows were out immediately, and with respect to the electricity, the response was so quick, and I know it was a huge job, but we were getting text updates constantly, we saw the electrical trucks out there, and I have a lot of friends who live in places serviced, where one place services many towns, and they seem to have a lot of trouble getting in touch or getting answers, and that hasn't been the place here. So I'm just very grateful to be a Madison resident, and I wanted to thank you all for making Madison such a wonderful place to live and to raise my family. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your first council meeting, and please, come back every two weeks.
Come more often.
I like that.
Anyone else wishing to be heard?
Hello, my name is Christine Mullin, I have been living in Madison for 17 years, and I'd like to talk about traffic and speeding.
Your, your, your address, did you?
165 Central.
Thank you.
I see we're making an effort with the solar speed things going off here and there, but listening to what we're doing with the police cars, donating them to the health department, I wonder if we can't place them strategically in places around town. No officer inside, just park them to discourage people from speeding up, let's see, Green, Green Village, Greenwood, Ridgedale, Rosedale, Central, pick a street, people are just flying up and down. And I know we can change behavior, and I know if someone sees a police car, they will slow down. So I'd just like to present that as an idea for these cars that seem to be sitting around to have a second use. Thank you.
Thank you. The chief is here, so we got that, and I believe we have done that, and you're correct, it is a very strong traffic calming method, that, nothing like a parked police car. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, close this part of the agenda, and we move on to introduction of ordinances.
The ordinance is scheduled for first reading, have a hearing date set for Monday, November 10th, 2014. All will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
Call up Ordinance 54-2014 for first reading, ask the clerk to read ordinance by title.
Ordinance of Borough of Madison amending Chapter 34 of the Borough Code entitled Police Department.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 54-2014.
I second it.
Any further council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ordinance 56-2014.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Ordinance 17-2014 appropriating $80,000 from the Water Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of a new generator at well E to increase the appropriation from $80,000 to 140,000.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 56-2014.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Rob?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I fully support putting permanent generator at this well, however, the thought of having a 500-gallon diesel tank on top of a well is a little concerning to me, number one. Number two, even though it would potentially last three or four days, the thought of having to drag 500 gallons of diesel out there to refill the tank, or, or a smaller amount in inclement weather, makes me concerned, not only for the amount of effort it would take, but also the potential health and safety of the workers, and I would ask the council to consider spending the extra money and putting in a natural gas generator.
Now, there...
Mr. Catalonello makes really good points, I'm concerned that we're not doing the most forward-thinking solution for this well also, but what, how do we do that procedurally?
Yeah, we would, that would certainly be a substantial change, so we couldn't introduce it, and then we'd have to reintroduce it anyway. What we, actually what we could do is go forward with the introduction, come back in two weeks with more information versus natural gas and diesel, if the decision at that point is to go with natural gas, we'd have to introduce a new ordinance. All right. Ben?
The one additional item I would like to see discussed when indeed we come back on this subject, is the one of pressure. We're a low-pressure area when it comes to gas, and lots of houses now have their own generators, and at least I've been told by someone who seemed authoritative, that if we ever turn them all on at the same time, for example, when there was a storm, we'd be very disappointed in the result, that there wouldn't be enough pressure to push the gas all around. Now, on the other hand, I agree with the comment, I'm concerned environmentally about sticking a 500-gallon tank of diesel fuel almost anywhere, but on top of a well is particularly concerning.
But we'll make sure, in our research, we also look at pressure issues. Well, just a second, David, well, Carmella?
I just want to ask David another question, all the other wells that have generators, are they natural gas, or are they diesel? What have we bought in the past?
Have diesel. It's a double-walled convault tank that's put in there, it's not a single vault, and then we have that at well A, we have it at well D, and we have it down at, C is the same thing, and D, I mean, E, not E, B, I gotta give, let me go there. They all have, yeah, they all have, that's all they put in years ago, was diesel generators, and they are double-wall tanks, they do not leak. And then we had a convault, we just did over a well, if anybody wants to see it, it's well, right at well D, it's outside the well, and it's not inside, and the generator that we are gonna be putting in is not inside the well, it's outside the well, because the one that's in the well now went bad, so we're putting it outside the well, because it has to be bigger, it's not gonna be inside the well, and they are double-walled.
Okay, Ben?
In these cases, and in particular, in the one we're talking about, these tanks would be above ground?
Yes, they're above ground, and we have, all of our tanks are above ground, we do not have no in-ground tanks due to the EPA. We had them, we got rid of all of them, back in, I guess, the mid-'80s, we got rid of those.
So is a double-wall with a containment area underneath the tank?
Yeah, it's a tank, two liners, you got inner liner and outer liner.
But, but in addition to that, is there a containment area?
Yeah, there's always a containment area we put all around it. You have to put a concrete pad and a certain, certain high of, like, curving in that around it, so if it should rupture.
Pat, and then we can...
I was gonna say, in addition to the other concerns, are we at all concerned about the fact that we've kind of got all our eggs in one basket, which is diesel, should we be diversifying and having at least one well that runs on natural gas, or two, if we have to do something in the future, so regardless of, you know, if there's a shortage of one, we can at least rely on the other.
That's certainly a good, a valid point too, I think, to, any other, so, any other comments or questions? So if people are comfortable, is, go ahead and introduce this ordinance, that way, if the decision is to stay with diesel, we stay on track, but if we, after our two weeks of doing some research, asked, answered all these questions that have been posed, we decide to go natural gas, we will reintroduce.
Yeah.
Okay. Roll call, vote, please?
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ordinance 57-2014.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, County of Mars, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 185 entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Article 7, Emergency No Parking.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 57-2014.
I second it.
Council discussion? One question I have is, why was it repealed? Because this, this was the law once, of no parking on snow coverage, we know, we have no idea. Nineteen seventy-six, come on.
Just take it away.
It was the Olympics.
During the, um, pre-cut, it was a full moon of the Borough Code.
Okay, so we, all right, we don't, we don't know why it was repealed, and we can't think
of any reason why we shouldn't have it, so that's good enough. Any other questions or comments? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landergan?[1664.83]